White Springs Town Council meeting to order Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty-six P M. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Father, again we come before you, we thank you and magnify you for this day that you have made, and we are obligated to rejoice and we are glad in it. We thank you, God, that no weapon that is formed against us shall prosper, and any tongue that rises against us, God, will be condemned. And we thank you, God, for standing on your word as we're standing, while we thank you for what you've done, for what you're doing, most of all, for what you're going to do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our Q B Burt, Lenny Pope, Jacqueline Williams, Anita Rivers, President, we have a forum, we will continue with the agenda. Any additions, deletions, or amendments to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to amend the agenda to move number five, I'd like to report with your power of power consulting to move amendments, B.
Alright, so Mr. Richard Powell's financial report will be moved to, and B. Alright, any other additions, deletions, or amendments to the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I keep the best caution to the majority when I do.
Yes. Can I get a second on the motion? I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay. Uh, approval of the minutes for February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, can I get a motion to approve?
I'd like to report that approved the minutes for February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as written.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I keep the word second motion.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Right, Administrative Department Town Manager Vanessa George.
Okay, I have a couple of things I would like to discuss. One of them is under new business, but it's, I put it with her. We met with two security companies, Security Safe and A T. And, um, the clerk has a quote for Security Safe.
What was the other company?
A T. Did they show up? Yes, the, yes, Security Safe, sorry.
A T never came?
They came, but they have not.
No, it never sounds cool. So these are all the things that we will get in the packet, and that's the total of forty-nine?
Yeah.
Total is not working out, I don't think. Total is big, something. See if there's anything there.
It says fifty-four, we have thirteen hundred and forty-nine.
So that's the gap, in other words, add those up.
Oh, yeah.
Second, yeah.
Okay. Wait a minute.
Yes. It will equal, give me one of them. Because he mentioned, because I told him, I said, the way you got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard. Forty-nine.
Yes, but it's.
That says total twenty-two?
Yeah, so see, for fifty-four, that's every month, and then you've got the total here, two.
The twenty-two.
Two, two-five, then you've got thirteen hundred, then you've got four-nine-nine-nine, so it's eighty-four, ninety-five, I'm not saying.
Oh, so you had, um, three of them together, okay. And now what?
And I did call two others, and they gave me a ballpark figure. That was almost twice as much.
Did A T even?
They didn't. No, they came out.
They told me, did they, they never?
No, we're not asking for, like, I'm not asking for a vote tonight, but I did want y'all to at least know what we're asking for. We can ask y'all to have time to look at it and do it, and hope to, by, you know, we can get A T's vote to compare.
Hmm, okay.
But I think, um, this one, like we said, if you put it out there.
Yeah.
This is pretty much what we got.
Alright.
Okay, the other thing is, um, I spoke with, um, Mr. Plague, with, um, E D G, they do land planning, they do basically what Kenny Horn does. And, um, we discussed certain things that they're, that they can do for the town. They could, uh, do the planning zoning, they can look over contracts such as, excuse me, they can look at, um, subdivision flats. When people putting in, um, applications for new construction, um, additions, make sure it's going along with our code and our zoning. Um, we have an application for that property, instead of it being a, um, a high-density multifamily, they put in for single-family homes on one, a lot. Which is already zone residential, but then we just have to get the subdivision information, get it planted and approved. And they have to do that, what this, this planning, excuse me, this planning company, they can handle all of that for us.
So he's waiting on those to come in so he can replace the manhole.
And he said he thought he might have found somebody that could fabricate one?
No, what he wanted to do was try to weld it together and save the town money and they told him we can't do that. I was like, you don't have to spend, well that's about, it's not over the budget, it's like seven hundred and something dollars.
The good news is, so his tractor down, we got that coming in the middle of the day.
Yes. Well, it comes down, that's because they put some asphalt around it or something, so it's not. Lift it up, I guess, so you don't knock your car out of line.
That's a temporary, oh, on there, that's temporary.
Yeah, it's temporary.
So we'll, we'll see, um, road being, um, diverted soon, tractor being diverted pretty soon, when it comes in. Because, um, they gotta replace that. They gotta replace it with a new one, he tried to put it into the sewer grant when we got the sewer grant. But DOT would not let him, according to Ray, DOT would not let him go on forty-one, you know, they real, uh, protected for forty-one. But now that is, you got to, now they're really going forward.
Did Steve leave anything?
Uh-uh.
No presentation. Citizens from the floor, Ruby Dickinson? Robbie.
It's like Robbie just didn't show up there to be, because of Robbie. Well, Mr. Dickinson.
Uh, they call me Dollar General too, so.
Right, Mrs. Smiley.
Uh, we home propped out for twenty-five days, but I had this, uh, seventy-seven, twenty-two, according to drive back to here. Um, I approached, well, I was thinking about doing a cleanup with the, for the youth and everything, I'm, I'm not good with words, so y'all give us some time, but, um. The Willie Turner Park right next to Dollar General. Um, we go there all the time, we go to Steve's Park, we go to different ones, and I just wanted to just go there, give it, just a beautification. Clean them, uh, meal do off the top of the swings, clean off the leaves off the fielders, you know, clean up the bathrooms. We were gonna get all the gloves, supplies, we would appreciate if anybody would want to donate, whatever thing, but we were gonna have anything, and it's really for, um. I already need from the kids that are graduating, they have their community service hours.
Have you spoke to the school yet?
No.
To get a visit up?
And then also you need to speak with the SWAT, right? Don't they do it?
Um, yeah, Sean, there's SWAT does it also.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. So I just, and I spoke to Ms. Audrey, and I spoke to you guys, let me know that you guys will help us with just signing off on the hours to say that at that end of time. And that's all we need, I just wanted to invite the community to come out, because it's for everyone. And for the kids, the future that's gonna be able to run this town once, I want to bless them.
Do you have a date to say?
Um, March twenty-fourth, thank you.
At three?
At three P M, we plan to do it from like three to five.
I do want to, I'm gonna push her up right on out there, but, uh, this is a great resource for you. This kids' diversion, she do everything for kids, and she always advocate and doing stuff, so when you need stuff for kids, that's who you need to go to right there, she gonna get it done.
Yeah, and that's my.
And she gonna get you some.
That's my school teacher.
She gonna make you some strong.
She gonna make you some violence, you know, she probably don't trust you nothing, but when she come by kids, she gonna do it.
Probably bring, we just, we're getting water gloves, make sure they had gloves, so we had stuff like that, I was bringing my break, it's probably my entry to make sure we, the adults, not the kids. Say it just, um, light cleaning supplies, bleach, maybe vinegar, some stuff that's not only two, that's the same thing.
I'll do that supplies.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I also would say, um, a good person reach out to it, it's Ms. Alonberg, she's our outreach, um. Sponsor of Hamilton County School System, and she, I thought she was coming in tonight, but unfortunately she's not. But that'd be a really good start, especially with getting, putting more kids from, um, students from the school to help, to be in the same house. But that is one of the things that me and her been talking back and forth about.
Yes, ma'am.
I can get you a contact information.
And I was also, just looking out there, if we can talk to, um, any different churches or anybody else that needs community service so that they can get hours that they need. And they can, and we can maybe make a list of the students, uh, the community places, so that they can go and get their hours whenever they need to get it. And that was it, thank y'all, put you outside my.
Thank you.
We will be.
All right, Ms. Dickinson? Where's your Kristabia?
Call it crap. Kristabia.
Kristabia?
I wanted to talk about the historic preservation, but since y'all were talking about the summer program, can I kind of talk about this? Cause I actually been talking to some people behind the scenes about the summer program, cause like I told you, I do like planning. Um, I'm also a youth mentor, because I was a troubled youth, and I overcame a lot of things. So I do the most that I can to help children, I was really interested in a summer program, because I've met a lot of retirees and entrepreneurs and things like that in the area. Who can pass along different skills to the children who need them, or the young adults, because I am realizing that there are some, some young adults, like, you know, up to about twenty-five. Look like they need, uh, the skills and continuing education. Um, I have a lot of skills I'm willing to pass on, so that they can help other people, like build businesses and things among each other. So I think that was most important, but just what I wanted to talk, I just wanted to bring to y'all's attention that there is a grant, um, becoming built with, uh, April. And the deadline is in June, that is for historic preservation. And we qualify for it, and it is a matching grant, but we also probably have a twenty-five percent discount, cause we have the county. So I didn't know if y'all would be interested or something like that, but it covers, um, restoration of historic properties. It also covers the, the town, like the half of the sale, um, covers a lot of different things, so I just wanted to.
What is the deadline?
Um, deadline is June the first.
And what would you need from the town?
Um, I would just need to know what grant you all want me to do.
Oh, you gonna write a grant?
Yes, I would write against, I would.
Definitely. Thank you. Alrighty, that's all citizens from the floor, no old business, new business, Vanessa? Oh, there it is. Is that an alarm for you?
Oh, yeah, a law enforcement, so, as I said, it's, um, early, I know, so I can do that here, but it is due to the sweepstakes. Because of the sweepstakes, and, and we're on financial footing, we got all our, our artists in, the town is in, is looking good financially. I think we can revisit, uh, having our fire, our police department back. Before, it, it won't be a full time, like it, like it wasn't, it wasn't a full time before. It's never been a full time, but we can have White Springs Police Department. Right now, we're paying eighty-five hundred of money to the sheriff's department. Um, we can probably get us an officer, maybe an officer and a half here, and then we still use law enforcement.
They still have to.
They still, um, because, yeah, y'all train. So, um, I did wanna bring that up, and see what you all think about that, I spoke with you all on an individual basis, but now if you talk about it.
I'm all for it, I mean, the citizens have their mind, if I, I mean, the police department, but you know, with everything that's been going on, we just couldn't. But now that we love the sweepstakes amount, what, two thousand dollars more a quarter? Um, and we're paying, what, ninety-six thousand dollars to the county for sure? That ninety-six plus, the extra we got from the sweepstakes money, we can support our own fire department, I mean, police department down.
Get our cars back.
And we'll get our vehicles back.
Yeah, we have vehicles, we have, um, a little space for substation, we pretty much have everything that we.
Because all the equipment, anyway, they were gonna have to change.
Well, all, all the equipment was out there anyway, so we had to purchase equipment. But I, I wanna get with, um, the county, I wanna get with, um, Mr. Powell, and, and see financially how many we can get.
Right.
Because it does take a long time for somebody to get it. Uh, if we can, if we can do that, we'll have pretty much everything that, um, the town needs, I think now that's all we, that can is the, the reason why.
Definitely, I bring that up there. Need to.
Yeah, but had even Saturday, had they been connected, it was several citizens experiencing their concern, now, still not having police, police department, so.
I mean, we paying the ninety-six thousand all the time, we.
We don't even have, we have some meetings all the time.
Yeah, they not, they not here tonight.
You see, he right there.
Oh.
But, yeah, they don't always come, that's why I used to hear, but he.
And then it's like, you know, they don't show them what we calling, I called nine-one-one, I did a run around like crazy.
That's what we have out there.
It's really difficult for me to get through to somebody, even when I called the dispatch the other week, because a citizen showed up to my house, you know, that was unwanted. It took forever. And then I was questioning third degree, like, what I needed on four doors.
Yeah. We're pretty against that child now.
Yeah, we get treated bad, I share this probably, to me in my opinion, it's just not right, especially when we paying them, and they got our vehicles, they have two of our vehicles.
So would we still be paying them less money though?
No, we don't pay anything, because they're, we're in the county, so they have a.
You went with your, with your tax, you paying to have loan and all that, you paying them.
Right.
But we just paying them extra, just so they'll have a.
So we can have a deputy here. Oh.
Yes?
I do have a question, are the, the sheriff department, have they been keeping the cars, like, the upkeep of the cars?
We don't check on any of that, they got the cars, they're supposed to keep them up, so. I see the one that Tracy drive every night, and the other one I can't identify, cause I'm sure they put sheriff's, so I don't know it, because it was just like the police car anyway, but Tracy's car that great.
The one that Jay Gull drives.
I didn't know who drives, I see it from time to time, I see that one from time to time. But they're, uh, they're operating, so, I mean, you know, they were supposed to keep up all the maintenance and everything.
And they, they have a.
That's part of their agreement, right?
Yes.
That they have to keep up the upkeep, the maintenance on it.
But they have to as a, as a law enforcement.
As a law enforcement agency, they have to anyway, by law.
No, I was just asking, cause if you do get your police department back, you don't need to be a Uber.
Oh, they coming back.
You don't need nothing they done dogged out.
Yeah, that was the part of the deal, well, that one white car, it was old already, it already had a whole lot of miles on it. Now Tracy's car was a Lewis, but I'm sure it's got a lot of miles on it now, but.
Cause she drove it.
Said they don't got two of the ones that was here?
Yeah.
One was no good, yeah, and the other one, the other, we remember we had two white, or Tracy's on Mark car.
It was two white, it wa, it was three charged all together, the light and two white.
Two white and then the gray, one gray. The one of the white ones, it wasn't even, it was out, out of commission, and the other one is the one they got that came. It was three, what I'm saying, it wasn't, yeah, that other one had been found. Alright, that's it.
Yeah, so now that I said, I'll get with, I'll get with Mr. Powell, and see what all it takes, and then, um, we'll start working on it, police department, I'll come back and ask for.
Alright, and Mr. Richard Powell has never showed, because. They probably threw him off too.
Indeed. He threw some emails, he did put down, well, not told him. Yeah, he told him, but you know.
And just for the public, the reason we had to reschedule was cause last week we did not have a corner.
That you see now, it's only three, so.
Yeah, and so when.
Anybody calls in. And they would have postponed it.
Any doubts, that's from the council.
Hi, girl, um, as I said, I will try to keep this South County, South Indian County informed about what's going on in the schools and in the community. Um, as you know, spring break is coming up. Also, um, Sheena Richardson is April first, and, um, for spring break. Also, Sheena Richardson, or Richardson Legal, is having a, um, Easter event at the Jasper Park, Saturday, March thirtieth, from twelve to two. There will be bounce houses, um, dunking booths, and, and so if anyone available, of course, take your kids out, it's a great time to reconnect and start pulling our children back into the family bond. We also, the next day, the Brotherhood of Hamilton County is also holding an Easter, um, celebration, from two until at Buddy Parker Park, they have hamburgers, hot dogs, chips, drinks. Just once again, something to get out and give the kids something to do, and start by bringing our community close knit. Even though it's in Jasper, everyone is welcome, and as she said, with us, hopefully we'll start, have a special event committee soon to start bringing some of these things back to White Springs. And that's part of me talking to Ms. Alonberg, um, the event coordinator, or for Hamilton County. So some of the things that the schools do, that we can start like doing here, and it'll be so much easier, once we have this special event committee, to say, hey, let's do this with her and set up at the baseball field. I know the town, um, as I said, some news mentioned before, we used to do the movie night with the popcorn, they did it at the baseball field, we did it at the community center. So hopefully, like within. Yeah, and so that, that equipment and everything is still available, correct, for the special event?
The movie equipment, we have the big blow up screen, cause they started doing it at the ball field, when I was working for the time, I did it at the community center, cause we put a screen in there. But, um, then they bought a blow up screen, so they do it at the ball field, and then, um, they have a popcorn machine, a cotton candy machine, and a hot dog machine.
And so we have already, um, the things in which needed, we just need the people to do so. And I would say, I do a lot, most people know that I do a lot of outreach, community wise. And I hear a lot of parents saying, well, we need something going on, the thing I'm asking the citizens, you have to be that person to approach us to do it. Of course, we can have a baseball field, but who's willing to dedicate their time to be a coach, to train these kids? And parents, you have to be those people to bring them, so that we can build these communities, so that we don't have to go to Jasper, we don't have to go to Lake City. And so I'm willing to work with, I don't know how to be with me, it's council, but I'm willing to work with individuals, I'm willing to work with special event committee. So that we can start saving our youth, because if it's not, if it's not us, then who? So we have to start, so, yes, Vanessa Nikki?
Who always on special events?
You.
And what?
You.
No.
Tay and Robby have, um, given a sheet, okay, and they wanna be a part of it.
They, they gave you the application, but as far as they know, it's just.
Yes, so strictly, yeah, that's why I said to you.
So I don't know.
And you should do it two at a time, you want, you want.
And so even with.
So maybe next month, you can get those to us, so we can go ahead and get you. But we need at least two more, no, we need to get two more, cause there's no.
We need to get five.
Yeah, I'm waiting, so, yeah, but they, they are.
And so even with, um, Ms. Alonberg, she, whenever she come, she will be bringing applications for volunteers for, um, next school year, which you can turn them in, but they won't be submitted into June. Which again, we could start using, hopefully, once again, jump back, so that we can start using our citizens to start doing things for our kids. I used to love Miss Jack Huzz's play baseball, I used to love one out there to watch, and maybe we can have an adult baseball, kickball game, we have the park, it's just, it's gonna take us. And grab a friend, everything I do, I grab my sisters, I grab my nieces, I grab my nephews, it's gonna take us to start putting something back here, so that our kids can grow. So that in ten years, some of those kids will be sitting here, and they'll know the meaning of why they actually here. And just nothing, I mean, this is basically free, it's something that you're doing from your heart, and if we don't instill it in our kids, then it's gonna be forever lost. And as you see, it's dwindling down inside of our community. So I'm just, like I said, I'm gonna keep announcing every time I know something going on, whether it's Jasper, Jameson, Hamilton County. But White Springs, let's stand up and start doing it here for our kids, so let's do something different.
That, that's what I have to go, I don't know.
Oh.
The community center, that is historic, right, cause that's what I was gonna talk to Shannon Williams about, with the right brands, and that's what we can probably do to, so people can start utilizing that community center again. Because we're about to use the offer funds that we had to use before the term, so we need to try to use that brand.
Which I had a citizen, um, calling, I said, the community just set us up.
I heard somebody earlier recently.
We get called, we get called, I get called.
We had to recellate the huzz when we have it.
And we had a lot of people readying the place for parties, heavy showers, but still, the town will be, like, the movie night, the family night, so.
Just one other thought, when y'all were talking about, you know, the ballpark and all that, there are, um, the, you, you have camping outlets, electrical outlets there.
Oh, yeah.
And at the folk, folk festival, that'd be a really easy way for the town to make a lot of money, is cause people can't find any place to park their big RVs or small RVs. Is to open that up, let people know about it, and charge it, now, obviously, there might be some liability insurance that would have to be, you know, considered, but, um. You just get the word out, I had somebody else just bring that up to me the other day, so why isn't the town, you know, letting people park their RVs there for that weekend?
A lot of them are asked, we don't, I mean, that's not, we just go around the town, and just park your RV here, but.
Yeah, any, any ideas y'all have for the town, you know, to make money, we definitely, uh, open to that, because they're already trying to do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, uh, and, and those RV people, those, they're probably willing to pay, you know, upwards to fifty dollars a night. Cause that's, you know, RV parks, we, you know, well, you wouldn't have all the hookups, but still, they're having electricity, so they can run their generators and have their ACs.
Yeah, good idea, they just won't have nobody after hours if they need assistance. They won't have anybody after hours if they need assistance, that's the only thing, so if they out there or whatever, they won't have it.
You know, that can be part of the deal, is, you know, a private security person is hired, or, you know, for, to patrol that.
Yeah, we definitely get that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that is worth looking into.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Oh, yeah.
The bathrooms, you know, just to make sure that, that's up and running, at least, but most of those people, they self-contained camping, I mean, yeah, people want to throw up a tent, you know, charging a lot less.
Yeah, that's true.
Money's money, so, um, as long as the bathroom is for you.
Yeah, we just need this floor, um, there's something on.
Or how to advertise for it, for that new apartment over there.
Well, through social media, I mean, there's a lot of things that, you know, and also I would think that would be many's to many's benefit, to know that people that.
An overflow.
Yeah, that, that, that you guys are willing to do overflow, well, the thing is, you can't, as a private camper, the only, um, the only people that are allowed to camp during the folk festival are the entertainers.
Oh, wow.
And so that's why, anybody, and that's going to cut down on attendance to the folk festival, if there's no place for them to, to go.
So let me ask you this, um, just wanna explore it a little bit, um, I'm always gonna, I wanna go to the negative, just so I can flush it out. How would you, how, how do they typically prevent people from, cause like when I went to Washington State, you got people in RVs, they park in a state. You can't get them out, they have a big problem with homelessness and people in the RVs and they parking state, how do they combat that when they are, um. I don't want people just going there, pay their money, fifty dollars, and don't, won't leave out, now we gotta issue. You can do a contract, you, when you have, like, the homeless people, I've seen it, I don't know, if you go to another state or city, and you see they got this big homeless park, it's gonna take you a while.
I, you know, I don't see that as a problem, people that are attending the festival.
So you're saying, just for, I mean, that's all, I was just asking, I just wanted to see how, if that was, yeah.
Not ongoing thing, just for.
I know, but I, you know, probably depreciate between, and she's come.
But when the sheriff, and be able to.
When I'm gonna come in the line, yeah, you see what.
They not coming like that, okay, I don't think.
Yeah, now you, uh, just like with any event, I think of it, you might have put up some barricades in private, you know, and, and, and just some signage, and, and then.
No, I think it's a good idea, I just wanted to see if, if anybody ever dealt with that, I've just seen that other place, and I'm like, oh my.
Jacksonville.
Yeah. They park anywhere, pull up, they park out.
But then put you a sign out that says violators will be told, so once the event's over, they violate their contract, if they don't leave, and have a tow truck, just hook it up and pull them on out?
That's a good, that's good.
I would, I would like to say one other thing to the citizen, um, you were talking about the cleanup, I don't know if you're all aware, but it is a park behind the baseball field. They have a tennis court, and it's a basketball court at the south end, and there's swings back there, and I mean, even some of our citizens doesn't even know that it's there. And once again, some of that came through because of the whole program, and my baby played many years on that tennis court. And so there's, once again, an option, so that we can start that, using these places for our kids.
And that's where we were wanting to, I mean, I know I didn't say, but maybe like once a month, we were planning on doing something like a cleanup in a different area.
Different areas.
Yeah, and take that time to, because we go to a lot of these, um, small tourism cities and stuff like that, and just what brings people in is when they see the beautification of it. And it's a lot that, that this town has everything it needs, we just need, I don't mind, like I say, maybe the people, I'm one of those people that don't mind actually doing, cause I'm a, I'm a worker, so if you don't ever need work to be done, I don't talk a lot, I work a lot.
Uh, the one thing in the tennis courts, um, I, I do believe that they are in need of repair, and recently, as part of Wisp, one of our, just brainstorming for extravagant projects, you know, down the road. Um, would, was to maybe convert those tennis courts to pickleball, because pickleball is so popular now, and anybody can play it, doesn't require, uh, you know, expensive brackets or, or a lot of lessons.
The moral was here, and he was the one that did.
Yeah, now that, yeah, Thomas.
We don't have anybody like that.
Yeah, so, but with pickleball, you know, that would, that would be very easy to, to, but once again, so, you know, that might be a grant that the town could look at, at, um, trying to procure too. Um, and certainly, um, Wisp would be willing to, to help out, if there is, you know, looking at grants, cause that's one of the things that we were interested in. To see that park just sitting there without families and kids, and, and grow, you know, not even playing kickball, you know? Like we all did.
Well, this is kind of really, it's like, you have to go through that one gate, and go down in there, almost, so it's like, nobody knows this path.
Do you know what development is going on, that they've been clearing all the trees behind where the old school was?
That's that, that's on that land.
Yeah, but you haven't heard.
The people that own the school on that land.
Yeah, but, so, but you haven't heard what's, what they're doing, or what they're doing.
My, my.
I think he just.
A lot of trees.
Y'all have any? That's it. He got, y'all have any? Alright, does the community have any other comments?
I just have a question. All this one side of the, on my, the long part with the few, can they have the grass cut?
Y'all did this with you? It's, that is basically, yeah. Y'all, y'all. Were y'all hitting it in the rain?
We, we mentioned it, but you know, they, and, you know, they use it on the cycle with the, with the, um, grass, we will tell them to try to get to, to try to get it.
Okay, thank you.
But, uh, yeah.
You gonna be in the field?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not that side of the ballpark, but.
Just that side, okay. At least if they could get that part.
Oh, see, then I would've told them the wrong one.
That's why I said. But, yeah, yeah, as long as they get all that.
They probably can get that, that part done, but, yeah, you, 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 that, 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 I feel like.
Right, that's so good with the plants, he been having a mess going on so bad with the plants, so he don't even get.
He been having a pool of Curtis.
Yeah, Curtis hasn't been, hasn't been going to the plants with him.
So the only one that's got really is checking, so that's why I say, we try to make sure.
Especially with our events. Ashley, let me get announced here, about to begin the Easter.
Yeah.
And the town.
Eastern, uh, Saturday from two to five, out at the Arm and Ball Park.
Alright. Be in the zone, seven twenty-three P M.